I'm glad you paid all that extra money for me in the chair.
I have spent a lot of time the last couple of weeks on this, on all this sort of stuff. All right. Getting some more of it. Okay, well, I've got some down here. I just wanted to, yeah, no, I just wanted to. Good evening and welcome to the February meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. Apologies for getting late, a late start. And as always, let's let you in on what we were doing in closed session with a report from our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved unpaid leave without benefits to a classified employee for a period of one year.
Thank you. At this point, we will turn to Trustee Padberg to lead us in an invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will be leading.
Yes, good, good evening. Please join with me in a moment of silence to express your own personal and private intentions, to be followed by brief comments by myself. Please bow your head. Thank you. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance and blessings on this, these proceedings tonight. We also ask that you bless our district employees and their family members, many who have been ill and some who are recently departed from us. We ask that you watch over them and their loved ones. Please bless our men and women of our armed services and keep them safe as they fight for the freedom that we all enjoy every day. In your name, this is all we ask. Amen.
Join me pleasing the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We have two resolutions to present today. The first is to the My Academic Plan Design Team. And Chancellor, if you have the resolutions, and is there someone here to call forward? All right.
I have a text. Yeah, I have a text. Thank you, Mr. President and Chancellor. I wonder if maybe you two gentlemen might go to the podium and I would read the resolution. Resolution. Whereas My Academic Plan, referred to as MAP, was launched online in April 2007 and has been used by over 17,000 students to guide them in setting their academic goals. And whereas the success of MAP was driven by Saddleback College counselors David Francisco and Steve Henda and Irvine Valley College counselors Tiffany Tran, Fon Tran Rivera, and Yolanda Goldsmith, with the leadership and technical talent of the district information technology team of Jim Gaston, Pratik Modi, Raul Gutierrez, as well as Becky Aguilar, Bob Froelich, Gary Staken, and students serving on the design team. And whereas MAP received the 2007 Technology Focus Award from the state chancellor's office and the district has since been awarded a special grant to explore how to expand MAP statewide. And whereas MAP was named one of only 10 national finalists for the 2009 Bellwether Awards and was a featured presentation at the Community College Futures Assembly by Board Vice President Williams, Chancellor Mather, and District Associate Director of Information Technology Jim Gaston. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby extend their enthusiastic commendation to the MAP design team through the development of a technological tool to enhance student success at Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Education Park. I so move that.
Second.
And I would ask the secretary to call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Lee.
Aye.
My name is Steve Honda. I'm one of the counselors at Saddleback College. And on behalf of the MAP design team, I'd like to thank the members of the board for this recognition. MAP's been operating for a few semesters, as was mentioned, and we're really excited about the potential for it to help students at Saddleback College, Irvine Village College, Irvine Valley College, and ATEP. And we're hoping that in the years to come, we're able to get continued support from the board, the colleges, to really develop MAP to its full potential. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I understand we have another resolution.
We do. Mr. President, if you and the Chancellor would remain there, and if we could invite President Glenn Rockmore and Coach Martin McGrogan to the podium, we have a special resolution. Dated today, February the 23rd, a resolution. Whereas Irvine Valley College head soccer coach, Martin McGrogan, has earned 250 victories while coaching at IVC. And whereas Coach McGrogan has, in his 19th year of guiding the Irvine Valley College soccer program, has led the team to a winning record in all but one of those past seasons, winning state titles in 1993 and 2003. And whereas Coach McGrogan continually emphasizes the importance of education, encouraging student athletes to transfer to four-year colleges and universities, many with athletic scholarships. And whereas Coach McGrogan has also helped several IVC team members to play professional soccer in the major leagues. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Coach Martin McGrogan for his outstanding leadership and dedication to the coaching of generations of Irvine Valley College student athletes. I so move, and I would ask the secretary to call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Lee.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for the honor. I accept this on behalf of the players who've coached at Irvine Valley. And we've had incredible help and incredible assistant coaches in both soccer and badminton. Some of the players from last year's team are actually here this evening from the men's soccer team. Would you please stand up? We're also very fortunate that our school has an outstanding record in ladies badminton and some of the ladies badminton team who this year will be very strong contenders for the state championship there here. I'd like to say thank you very much for coming. It's a very busy schedule. Thank you. And as you all know, it's a lot of people behind the scenes who do incredibly massive hard work. We really appreciate our counselors who help make sure that our students understand that they're student athletes. And it couldn't be done without the support of our dean, our president, and we're very, very grateful. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you and congratulations all. We have one public request to speak, and that request is from Farbad Kalafi. And if I have messed up your name, I do apologize. But if you would come to the podium, you may speak.
Hello? Thank you. Am I allowed to speak now?
Pardon me?
Am I, am I allowed to speak now?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I wanted to address to you guys today about the problem of smoking on this campus. And the current rule right now is 25 feet away from designated buildings. But even then, with the rule that we have right now is not being enforced, smoking is rampant around the campus unrestricted, anywhere you go, even the designated smoking areas that we have on this campus, which is around this building, actually, is not, nobody smokes around there. And I wanted to share some facts to you guys about secondhand smoke. Approximately 50,000 non-adult smokers, nonsmokers, die from, in the U.S. each year from secondhand smoke. Ventilation technology, according to the, the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning, cannot be relied on to eliminate secondhand smoke. According to nosmoke.org, there are at least 260 100% smoke-free campuses in the United States. 10 of those are community colleges in California, 100% smoke-free. Now, just as you and I know, the smoke prevention presents a health hazard. We all know that. But there are also other hazards to put in mind, hot fire hazards. Cigarette butts are left on this campus very often, as you and I both know. It's a hazard. You know, there could be that one person that doesn't stuff out their cigarette. Fire hazard right there. Causes about $4 billion per year of damage, cigarette fires in this country. And it kills approximately 1,000 Americans per year. But what I wanted to propose is that we go head towards a smoke-free campus, or at least a designated area where people like me or anybody like with asthma, or anybody with complications, pregnancy. There are definitely pregnant teachers, pregnant students on this campus, underage smokers, underage students, or anybody who's trying to quit smoking. It's not exactly from a very welcoming environment to those who are trying to smoke. Quit smoking, and then they see someone that's smoking or smell the smoke. Beyond that, not really anything to say without going around.
All right. Thank you very much. A couple of procedural items before we move to board reports. The first is, as many of you know, the district lost a very valuable employee recently with the passing of Holly Savio. And I am going to ask my colleagues that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Ms. Savio, who obviously all of us here knew and would ask that, that we do so. Second of all, I am going to advance item 6.1, which deals with tenure. I understand there is some cake and a little bit of a celebration to be held out in the hallway afterwards. And I want to get that, that item of business taken care of so that we can move to that before it gets too much later. So we will be doing that. All right. At this point, we are going to turn to Trustee Jay to lead us off with board reports.
It's 8:03. No board report.
Good man.
I'll try and be very, very brief. I just want to say that it was an exciting first year of the President's Cup of Basketball. And I, you know, although Saddleback College won, and congratulations Saddleback College, we could not have had a more exciting men's game, which Urban Valley College won on the buzzer. So, great. And I just want to say that I did attend the memorial service for our beloved teacher, Howard Adams, and it was truly touching. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to present the Orange County Legislative Task Force report for this month. At our most recent meeting, Chancellor Mather, who chairs the Orange County Legislative Task Force this year, invited a special guest, and the person of Orange County Treasurer, Chris Street. Treasurer Street discussed the outlook of revenues from property taxes, as they may affect the community colleges of our county. Revenues in each year are based on the previous year's assessments. Therefore, declining revenues are expected to hit by the year 2010, 2011 fiscal year. While we all need to be concerned and vigilant with the state budget, Treasurer Street mentioned his efforts to introduce new legislation that could raise over $1 billion in state revenue. There was discussion by task force members at the county treasurer's office is a future funding resource for Orange County Community College districts while awaiting state funding. A community college student rally entitled, "We Are the Key to Recovery" is planned for this Friday, February 27th, at Pasadena City College. You might be looking for that on the news. A new advocacy website has been launched for community colleges. The annual Legislative Breakfast, which is an event that the boards of the several districts and the administrative leadership of the districts look forward to each year, is scheduled for Friday, April 17. And we are the hosts this year at Irvine Valley College Business Sciences, Technology, and Innovation Center. This year, we're planning to feature student leaders in the program and to give them an opportunity to interact with our state legislative leaders. Since I was with the board the last time, I have been for a week in Washington, D.C., and for nearly a week in Mexico City. And I want to say it's nice to be back in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. I'll briefly talk about two items. Since the last board meeting, as Trustee Wagner mentioned, President Wagner, a district employee, Hallie Savio, passed away January 31st. And I, I attended her memorial service. I'll hold the picture up one more time. It was a wonderful service held in this very room. She worked for two vice chancellors of human resources, Bob King, who has, has moved on, and now David Bouguet. And I just wanted to say goodbye to her one more time. The room was full, standing room only, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful farewell. So, and I'm glad we're going to adjourn the meeting in her memory. Also, I attended the Futures Assembly, as was mentioned earlier. It was a wonderful session again. I have to say, we had a very good presentation. Raghu, President, or Chancellor Mather and I co-presented with Jim Gaston, the District Assistant Director of IT. Well-received. We had a good, good-sized audience to present to. A lot of questions, a lot of comments. One thing that I like to hear is some of the things we do here are better than many universities do for their students. More, more effective and more technologically advanced things that we do for student services. So, one thing I did hear, a couple of things, campus safety throughout the nation, colleges are moving in the direction of alert systems, increased campus safety. I went to one presentation by a community college in Virginia that's taken steps to have an alert system installed. Fortunately, they are adjacent to their county sheriff's department, so the response time is minutes if something happens on their campus. But I'd like to talk about security cameras and systems here again on our campuses. And I thought our real estate was high, even though the market's depressed. The Maui Community College District Chancellor's presentation, the average condo is 600,000, and the average single-family home in Maui is 900,000. And not many new incoming faculty members can afford to buy a home there, needless to say. So, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just briefly thank everyone associated with IVC who made astounding inventions the whole day, so much fun, and the program such a success. And let me thank everybody at Saddleback and IVC who made the basketball evening such a fun time and a success. So, thanks to everybody involved in those worthy efforts in view of the time. I will forego the rest of my report. Trustee Milchaker.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate our probationary faculty who will be granted tenure this evening. I know a number of them. I see Bill Billingsley out there. I know he's an excellent professor, and I don't know if there are any other, well, who's that? Who's standing up?
We'll introduce him.
We'll get him.
Oh, we'll, we'll introduce you during, during, during that particular agenda item, which will be coming up next. But certainly, our schools are made excellence by the excellence of the professors, and only by that, because it's the interaction between the school, the professor and the students, which is the most important interaction that we have, whether it's a coach, whether it's a professor of history, whether it's a professor of art, or, this is the most important thing that we do as, as, as a district. And I'm certainly delighted to see some of our great professors become tenured tonight. Also, I wanted to mention that a funny thing, that there's a play at Saddleback College, A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Forum, that will be playing through March the 8th. And it's really excellent and really fun, and I really recommend it to the people that are in the audience. I want to really congratulate both colleges, both Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College, for attaining accreditation, full, complete accreditation this year. We both received letters from both colleges at the beginning of February. And it's, it's over, it's done. We have full accreditation with the highest ranking of, that we can attain. And now, now we begin to start writing for the next accreditation term, which is the next, which is six, every six years we have to be accredited. So, we start preparing for that accreditation findings. I also want to sincerely thank my good friend, Norma Kershaw, who recently gave a $20,000 endowed scholarship to Saddleback College Foundation. Norma is, is a good friend of mine, and she's an incredible philanthropist in the area. She's, she's also an archaeologist, and she's in debt.
It's time.
Is it my time?
Your time.
Okay, my time.
It was fast, isn't it?
But, but I sincerely want to thank her. And it's, Norma said I could donate it to whichever thing I'm, is important to me. So, thank you so much, Norma. You're a good friend and a wonderful philanthropist. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
No board report, but I would like to amend your motion and just adjourn the meeting both in the memory of Hallie Savio and Howard Adams this evening.
Didn't we catch Howard at the last meeting?
Oh, did we? Okay. Pardon me then. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Student Trustee Lee.
I got a chance to attend IVC's homecoming. The game was fabulous. They had a lot of free stuff. I got a really cool tattoo on my arm. It was airbrushed, though. And I got a chance to sit with Saddleback ASG, and they're such fabulous people. I love them so much. And I'm really thankful to have such bright and cheerful, smart student leaders on campus. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. I would just like to comment on the state budget situation briefly. While we finally have a state budget with media cuts and so forth, and of course, with a lot of, I think it's a lot of income tax increase and sales tax increase that the state has adopted a budget. I'm very concerned about its impact on the people of the state of California. Just today, in the Los Angeles Times, there was an article about schools struggling with cuts. The subheading was that the districts across the state face decisions to lay off teachers, increase class sizes, and eliminate programs. We are fortunate that in this district, we are talking about hiring, for example, additional faculty members. But in our neighboring Salbach Valley Unified School District, they're talking about making cuts to the tune of $13 million. And this story is fairly common in other neighboring school districts as well. The article states that the, under the budget approved by the state Thursday last week, schools and community colleges will be forced to cut $7.4 billion from their budgets this year and $3.2 billion next year. In fact, Salbach Valley Unified School District is considering closing one of their neighborhood elementary schools. The State Superintendent Instruction, Jack O'Connell, stated that this budget will result in real cuts to real students in the classroom, and these reductions will be felt and seen. Another example is in the Los Angeles Unified School District. They are making cuts to the tune of $800 million. And there's a quote in this article from David Sanchez, President of the California Teachers Association, that teachers must be warned by March 15th if they will face any layoffs. But already districts have decided to send more than 12,000 pink slips to tenured and probationary teachers. So, the news is not good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this point, we are to board requests for reports. And there is one request that has been received in writing for a report on reduction of district property tax rates requested by Trustee Williams. And discussion of the item, or shall we vote on it?
I think we can proceed to vote on it.
I see no requests to discuss. Let's vote on accepting the report. Trustee Jay. Thank you. Matter carries unanimously. All right. Let's advance item 6.1 and deal with the annual report on probationary faculty recommended for tenure. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Moved and seconded and discussion. All right. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously, and congratulations to our new tenured faculty.
Can, can we introduce the newly tenured faculty?
Those that are here? May I?
Yeah, go.
At this point, I would like to call upon Presidents Todd Burnett and President Rockmore from their respective colleges to introduce their tenured faculty members to the board. You may ask that your faculty members to join you there at the podium.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, President, and Board of Trustees. Saddleback College is very thrilled. We have 23 new tenured faculty, and we're very excited about that. We'd like to introduce a few of them that are with us here tonight and give them special recognition. And thank you, faculty, for being here. We apologize. A few of them were planning to be here tonight, but unfortunately, at the last minute, had some complications. First, I'm very pleased to, to introduce Leslie Lowe. She's a professor in our Emeritus Institute for Kinesiology and PE. Leslie? Second, I'm pleased to introduce Professor Sukie Fisher, is a professor of English. Sukie? Next, we have Sharon Lee. She's a professor of math. Hi, Sharon. And finally, with us here tonight from Saddleback is Bill Billingsley, professor of history and political science. And Chris, you're not on my list. Oh, yes, I am. I'm so sorry. Apologize, everybody. And we have Professor Chris Lippin-Christensen, who's a professor of psychology. Sorry about that, Chris.
And IVC has two faculty here tonight, two others receiving tenure or in class at this moment. So, first of all, is now professor Simon Davies of Health Science, PE, and Athletics, and also the women's soccer coach. And next to him is Bill Etter from the English Department.
If I may ask the presidents to escort your faculty members to the cake outside in the foyer area so that we have a very special cake in their honor. So, and anyone else who's interested may join them in, in having some cake and give them some company. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations and thank you all. All right. For, for the rest of us, getting back to business, we have our discussion and information item tonight, 4.1 in the agenda, the Basic Skills Initiative. And for that, I guess we will also start with the Chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. I'd like to call upon Vice Chancellor Bob Bermuda to introduce the topic and the speakers. Basic skills is the discussion, was the discussion topic of the month last month, but in the interest of time, we have moved it to this month. Vice Chancellor Bermuda, please.
Good evening.
And I'll remind you, it is late, and your report is very comprehensive, and we've all had a chance to read it. Take that as a hint.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to today's report, tonight's report on the Basic Skills Initiative will be delivered by Dr. Rajan Verdin and Dr. Craig Justice. And we begin with Dr. Verdin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a revolt going on up here. You all want to go off for cake. Well, excuse us while we get some cake. Carry on.
Members of the board, good evening. Before I start, I'd like to recognize Professor Cheryl Altman, who is sitting in the audience, who is the faculty member in charge of basic skills at Saddleback College. Professor Altman, help. Professor Altman helped us put this PowerPoint together and also helped write the report. Basic skills, as you know, refers to all those courses that fall below those courses that we consider college level. At Saddleback College, those basic skills courses consist of the English 300 Series, English as a Second Language 300 Series, Mathematics 300 Series, and Reading 300 Series. The students coming to Saddleback College have to take placement tests and where do those students place? We will notice that in English, 30% of them will place in what we would call basic skills. Reading, about 37%, and mathematics, 12%. This poses a serious concern to faculty and to the students also. We would like to know whether those students can read the textbooks that they have to study. Can they write clear essays? Can they follow instructions and directions? Do they have the capacity to listen to what the teachers are telling them? Can they take notes so that they can perform very well in exams? And can they do basic math? All these skills that are required not only to succeed in college, but also to succeed in life. What are we doing at Saddleback College to help those students? We are using what we call paired classes, where students can take two classes at the same time, where the instructors know that the two classes are going together. We also have supplemental instruction, where teachers have added extra modules in their classes so that students can take additional training in those classes. We have a learning community, where we have a cohort of students taking a whole set of courses and move together. Faculty have gotten together to talk about the problems posed by basic skills concerns in the classes. And we are also looking at how we can get students to take all the basic skills classes before they take the transfer level classes. In the spring of 2009, Saddleback College has a list of projects that have been funded to help in the area of basic skills. We have faculty members looking at how we can promote reading and writing in the sciences. Faculty have stepped forward to mentor students in mathematics and English. Other faculty members are looking at how we can build strategies for students to succeed. We are podcasting on a subject called Algebra to Go, where students can be studying algebra anywhere they want. And finally, we have a Back to Success campaign, which is looking at no more academic probation. What do we expect as outcomes for everything that is happening at Saddleback College? We want the college to be fully aware of what is going on. We want the community to be involved in helping all those students go beyond basic skills and succeed at college. We want them to be able to move on to other classes and do very well. We want them to succeed and thus graduate faster and meet the California Community College mission.
Rajan, good evening, everyone. At Irvine Valley College, our basic skills courses consist of the list of courses that you see here for the most part, so students may take those classes voluntarily or most often, they are placed in those classes. And the placements at IVC are the result of various types of assessment tests that have been used, or placement tests that have been used. Formerly, we used the Nelson-Denny. Now, we're using something called CTEP. As you can see in English, the college-level writing courses are Writing 1 and Writing 201 and that number looks like it's dropped from 73% to 60%. We think that's because of the change in the test that's being used and the English faculty are working very hard to try to get those cut scores normed and explained. What happens to students who don't place in those two courses? They're directed to the Writing 301 course so that they can quickly move forward onto the next level of college-level courses, or ESL. There are almost 700 students who place into ESL. The good news is, the number of students placing into English Composition, English 1A, it's commonly known at Irvine Valley, it's called Writing 1. That group increased 3.1% this year, from 742 to 765 students. Student placements in reading and math are basically stable, as you see by these statistics. And in mathematics, there are numerous new programs to try to help them move to the next higher levels of mathematics. The Basic Skills Initiative at Irvine Valley College is advised by the Institutional Effectiveness Committee. There are 14 members. It's one of our five strategic planning committees on the campus. It's chaired by Wendy Gabriella, Academic Senate President, and co-chaired by the Research Officer. That position's been vacant for some months, however, so the burden of the work has fallen on Wendy's shoulders and we appreciate that, Wendy. BSI is now part of the College Strategic Plan and we administer a grant of $100,000 and funded proposals are competitive, criterion-based, and research-based so that we can assess the project's effectiveness. The projects currently underway include curriculum modules in pre-algebra for mathematics, faculty training in norming English. This is in its last year of development and is being institutionalized and a part of the day-to-day operations of the English department in the coming year. There's a diagnostic for ESL. There's a project to improve tutoring center services, particularly in the area of math tutoring, and training teachers to enhance teacher effectiveness in the basic skills area. And to wrap up, projects should result in what things? Well, we have a list of four important ones. More accurate student placement in writing is one. Increased student success and persistence in math courses. A redesigned curriculum in ESL so that the ESL student of today can advance quickly to be the transfer English student of tomorrow, which is their goal in most cases. And then finally, enhance teaching skills and standardized grading in basic skills English classes. And that concludes the report tonight.
Thank you very much. The cake is really good. We ought to do tenure more often, right? Questions from my colleagues? Trustee Fuentes.
May I ask, do you have a rough percentage, if you had it here, I may have missed it, of percentage of students that are taking ESL classes?
The number is about 700 out of the 14,000 students we have, so it's a significant number, but not certainly the dominant number. I don't have that.
And would that be evenly spread among part-time and full-time, or would it be mostly part-time?
Most of them, most of them are actually, I believe, full-time and they're here on a student visa for the most part, because most of them are foreign students. Some of them are not, but most of them are taking at least 12 units.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchur.
Thank you so much for the report and I also want to thank our two vice presidents, wonderful vice presidents of instruction and also two professors, Professor Cheryl Altman and Professor Wendy Gabriella for all their work in preparing this report. I was just wondering, could you explain the Algebra to Go program? I know this is a new program that you have and it sounds pretty interesting.
It's a program that was devised by Professor Larry Perez and what he has, he has podcasts set up so that anybody could just load them on their iPhone, on iPod, and wherever they are, they could just be studying their algebra. And they could be stuck in traffic and studying algebra.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Quick question. I see in the Saddleback report that there's a bullet point partnering with area high schools and primary four-year transfer institutions and some of what you're saying about basic skills, it sounds like it's a problem, obviously, that both colleges have, but it's a problem that comes to us from the K-12 districts. What are we doing to reach down, if anything, to reach down and see about addressing the problem, not just before our students hit transfer level classes, but before they hit us at all?
We meet on a regular basis with the high school leaders and now our faculty members are meeting with the faculty members of the high schools so that there can be some form of understanding as to what happens when they leave high schools and come to the college. Where is that gap? What is it that they are missing? And this will result in a better alignment of the curriculum between the high schools and the colleges. And this is happening thanks to the basic skills money that we receive and faculty from the colleges that are now meeting with faculty at the high schools to look at that.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Milchur.
I just want to comment on something that you already said, that these foreign students that come here from other countries to take ESL to learn English are paying full tuition, so it's not costing the taxpayers anything. They're paying for their entire education themselves. So, this is a win-win situation for these students and for our colleges and it doesn't hurt our taxpayers at all. So, thank you.
Seeing no further comments or questions, thank you, gentlemen. Apologies for kicking you over from last month, but we do appreciate it. Thank you. We have another report today, item 4.2 here with discussion and information. This is the Saddleback and IVC College Curriculum Report. And I see Professors Smidler and Cosgrove waiting anxiously to speak. Come on down. Suddenly, Bob's going to be shy. He's never done that before.
I'm Bob Cosgrove. I'm filling in for David Francesca and we have an acting gentleman who has been at the helm of curriculum a number of years ago, Bob Jacobson. Would you stand up, Bob, for a moment? He has graciously stepped in to fill Howard's shoes, a difficult job, but his background and experience is excellent and he's had, what, two meetings so far with the Curriculum Committee, so I said I would fill in. We did a lot of work. Thank you. Any questions?
You've never been that pithy before in your life. Thank you. We'll now hear from Professor Smidler. See if she can top that.
Let me say a few things. One of the things you're not going to hear tonight is the number of changes in our programs, certificates, because we just approved that, has to go to the Senate and then it will come, I'll bring it back to you if you'd like me to. But in terms of the curriculum itself, the number of courses, we had 671 changes last year and this year, we're at 711. And I could break these out. New courses, 74 revisions, 393 deletion, 17 special topics, 185, and distance ed 42 for an increase of 40 items essentially. We are working vigorously to solve a particular problem that we thought we would have had done a while ago and that's our Curriculumet, which allows us to do a couple of things, one of which is the infamous SLOs, that we can put those, feed them right into the program and also program review. And Claire Cesaria Silva, a former Senate President, is in charge of our institutional effectiveness and she's working with Linda Bascher, our specialist in curriculum, to do that. So, any questions? Hearing none. I adjourn the meeting.
Professor Smidler.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Schmidler from Irvine Valley College. I am the curriculum chair, although any takers are welcome. The IVC curriculum approval process for new and revised courses continues throughout our academic year. Faculty at IVC really appreciate the board's willingness to receive curriculum at any of your board meetings. I'd particularly like to thank the board for their support in this regard. It's a great morale booster for us to know that whenever we accomplish a piece of curriculum revision or write a new piece of curriculum that needs to come to the board, that we can bring it to the board at their next meeting, that we don't have to wait for an entire year. It means that our faculty continue to work on curriculum throughout the academic year and in fact during the summer. It used to be in the old, old, bad days, when we brought our curriculum all at one time, that once the deadline had been reached and the curriculum was in for the year, no one felt particular incentive to do any other work. And so, even projects which were nearly completed would fall fallow and maybe they would be resumed in the fall, which meant they had to be started afresh. And many of the people who had run afoul of the deadlines the year before ran afoul of them again. Now, because we know that curriculum can always come to the board, people continue to work on their projects and as I say, work on them throughout the year, not only the academic year, but in the summer as well. And I do want to thank you and let you know that the entire faculty is really appreciative of that scheme. Just for example, since the last report that I made to this board, last spring alone, we submitted 146 more pieces of curriculum revisions or new pieces of curriculum items to the board. So, between the time that used to be our deadline and the end of that spring semester, 146 more pieces of work came and that's because of your willingness to let us come year-round. So far this year, we've brought forward something like 40 additional pieces of curriculum. I'm not calling, counting technical changes in DE, but actual revisions or new pieces of curriculum. And we have something more than 100 of them still in the works in various stages of revision or of composition. And so, you'll be hearing from us throughout your year as we continue to work through ours. Thank you very much. And of course, I'm always open for questions.
Stick around. Trustee Milchur.
Thank you so much, both of you. I know you're both great scholars and I'm not just buttering you up, but I've seen your credentials and I've also seen you dissect a cow's heart, so it was, as a former biology professor, it was a great experience. You did a great job. I was just wondering, what are the majority of curriculum revisions about? Are they because of current changes in knowledge or what are they generally concerned with?
That's actually a very interesting question and answer. They vary tremendously. We're required to keep our curriculum current and as you know, that's the beginning of the policy that has brought me here tonight, is that this is all about keeping our curriculum current. So, all curriculum is required to be at least looked at to ascertain that it's current. Some of our revisions are very minor because not only has the material not changed over the last five or six years, but the way in which it's taught hasn't changed appreciably either. That would be true, for example, maybe of some history courses or some English courses. In other areas, the curriculum needs to be revised every year or two. For example, the rapidly changing technological things, computers and technologies and so forth, and everything in between. Sometimes, the way in which a course wants, the faculty wants to present the course changes and so even though the content doesn't change, the format of the curriculum does to reflect a change in presentation methodologies. And so, it really encompasses the entire spectrum of reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Can you tell me at where, at what point, if any, is there a comparison of curriculum among the several districts of Orange County? If somebody signs up for a class with a title that's the same as one at Santa Ana or at Orange Coast, how do, how does the buyer, the student, know that that is the same product?
Well, sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't the same product and there's only a, there's a range within which one can do that, get that information. There are several ways in which both faculty and students can do that comparison. One of them is through Curriculumet, where all the colleges that have bought into Curriculumet actually publish their curriculum and we can see it in its entirety. That's only available for faculty members and counselors, of course, included, so they could do that kind of level of comparison. But we, for example, publish the, if you will, the real substance of the curriculum, the content, the methods of evaluation, and the learning objectives for each piece of curriculum on our MySite website, so that when a student clicks on any particular course, they can go to a details page and see that substance. Not all colleges do that, but at least they can see exactly what we're doing and if other colleges do the same kind of thing, then they can compare them. There's an awful lot of word of mouth. There's a lot of communication among faculty members, informally and relatively formally. They're, so in general, we tend to know what kinds of things are going on when students come to come to me and look for advice. For example, in my field, I have a reasonable sense of what the other colleges in the area are offering, so if they're closed out of one of my classes, I can advise them as to which of the colleges are strong and which of them are perhaps a little less strong in those fields. But frankly, you can describe a course using the same words, and one instructor is very different from another, and at that level, ratemyprofessor.com just, it purports to tell you, but it in fact does not, and there is no way to compare that except by trying them out.
I was coming at this, in the back of my mind, with the idea of our marketing efforts and our competition today with resident students of our district who go to Orange Coast, who go to Santa Ana, and is there any, is there any way that we could interface in some way that would benefit our marketing efforts? You see, you see the...
I do indeed. I think probably one of our most powerful marketing, marketing methods for that kind of thing is to toad our own horn about our high transfer rates and the high success rate of our students who transfer, that when our students transfer to the UC system or to the Cal State system, they have a very high success rate of being accepted into those systems and a very high success rate once they have entered. There's, they don't tend to come back to us because they haven't been well-prepared. And we can document that to a certain extent, although surveying students who have left is an extraordinarily difficult thing to do, we can document it to a certain extent. We also have a fairly good anecdotal archive to say that our students are highly successful when they transfer. So to me, being very academic and career-driven, it would seem to me that that post-college, post-community college success rate would be a very good marketing tool.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Seeing no further questions, we will move on. And let me give a technical word to my colleagues. We've been having some trouble with the display up here and have figured out why. If you want to speak, press the request to speak button. Don't turn on your microphone. Your request to speak button will go on, but I won't see it. So make sure the microphones are off until you request to speak, and then push the request to speak button. Trusty Williams.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
In light of the time, I would move that we extend the curfew until 9:30. It's 8:42 now.
Second.
Moved in second. At all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, matter carries unanimously. We are at the consent calendar, and let me ask my colleagues, are there any items to Seeing no one pulling anything, moved and seconded. Trusty Fuentes, did you?
Moved. Moved.
Okay. I will clear that. I will clear that entry. All right. Consent calendar is moved and seconded. Let's vote on it. Matter carries unanimously. 6.1 we have dealt with. We are at 6.2, which is here for approval. It is curriculum revisions. And a word to the board, a reminder, at the request of the Academic Senate at Saddleback and Saddleback Administration, we are going to poll and table the three geography courses, I think there are three, online geography courses on page 29, and they will be sent back out for further work and may come back to us in a month or so. But I will entertain a motion to divide the question and remove those three.
So moved.
That's geography 1, 2, and 3.
Geography 1, 2, and 3, the three items that are on 29, page 29 of the exhibit. All right. Moved and seconded. All in favor of dividing the questions, signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, matter carries unanimously. All right. Let's deal with the rest of the curriculum and then deal with the separated items first. Questions or comments from the board?
Move approval. Second.
All right. Seeing none, hearing a motion and a second, let's vote. All right. And I will entertain now a motion, that carries unanimously, I will entertain a motion now to table the three geography courses.
So moved.
Moved and seconded.
The online versions.
These are the, right, these are the online versions that we have polled at the request of Saddleback's Academic Senate. All right, let's vote on that item. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you all. And we're at 6.3, which is the state chancellor's, here for approval, the state chancellor's funding, hold, and facilities impact. And let me entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
All right. Discussion of this item. Trusty Padberg.
This is an interesting item in view of where we are, but I think we certainly need to approve it, so I'm in favor of it. Obviously, the state's financial situation is something we have to confront and deal with, so. I'm just making comments. I don't have any questions.
Very good. Further questions or comments? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. We may not need that extension of time. We are at 6.4, the Village Expansion Project, here for approval.
Move approval. Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Let's vote.
Bill.
And Marsha. All right. 6.5, you know, you put cake, you know, some sugar in these people, and they, they get a lot done really fast. All right, we, matter carries unanimously, we, we are at item 6.5, the Study Abroad Program. Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a comment.
Trusty Fuentes. There you go.
I still just want to remain expressive of my concern that we seek the best value and most reasonable price for study abroad programs, for all our study abroad programs in the district. And this is an expensive program. I feel also, though, that in this day and age, the marketplace is the best judge, and so I will support this, this evening, and let the marketplace play out. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.6 is here for discussion and appro, or approval. This is a revision to Board Policy 5625 concerning students in the military.
Move approval.
Moved for approval, moved and seconded, and comment from Trusty Fuentes.
I would just like to... I'd just like to express support for this, and from the standpoint that it brings to our attention one more time, the importance of our returning veterans and students in the military that we, as a community, need give special attention to. I commend our college presidents for their interest in these young people that wear the uniform of our land. We have a tradition in this district of honoring them, and they're veterans as well, and I think it is important that we don't let this slip by without mention. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Trusty Jay.
I see that from here on in, the credits that a student who had past military experience would be measured according to the evaluation of educational experiences in the Armed Forces and so forth, the guide to evaluation. I don't see Bob Jacobson here anymore. He's left, hasn't he? He's done articulation for us for years and years, and is an expert at it. But I'm very concerned that the six semester units are just X-ed out. And I hope that the guide to evaluation of educational experiences in the Armed Forces does a good job of providing at least the six semester units of general elective credit if a student's service advocates that. So I'm just very concerned that we not stop giving credit for tremendous sacrifices that these individuals have made in their service careers. And so I'm very concerned about the elimination of that clause. However, the way I read this, they could receive more than six units if the, is that correct?
Well, let me turn to the Deputy Chancellor. Oh. All right. Let me, let me turn to Trusty Lang first, who can clarify that for us.
I was concerned about this as well, Trusty Jay, because basically we replaced something specifically that addressed that with something of a very general nature that didn't seem to say very much. And then I was informed that there are administrative regulations that will be coming to us that incorporate the credit that were formerly part of the policy.
Okay.
So you'll be seeing, well, no?
No. Administrative regs don't come to us.
I'm sorry.
But they will exist.
They, they will exist, that will support the credits that you've described.
Okay. I guess, just because it still is a little indeterminate there, I think I'll vote no on it tonight. If the rest of you vote to accept, that's fine.
As Trusty Lang...
Well, it's not approval.
As Trusty Lang said... Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. The motion, well, the motion I thought was for approval.
Correct.
Correct.
So not for discussion?
Yeah.
It was moved for approval, so that's the motion. And Deputy Chancellor Porter?
Yes. As Trusty Lang was saying, the, the policy is being split into just a policy statement that you have here, and then there's administrative regulations covering all the details. And the first one of the details is that veterans may be awarded six semester units of general elective credit. So it's, what you're concerned about is covered in the administrative regulations. They will be in effect as soon as you approve the policy.
Okay. Well, if you're guaranteeing to me the six semester units, I'm a happy guy, but go ahead.
I still have another comment that I wanted to make.
Trusty Lang, you still have a...
Along the lines of what Trusty Fuentes was saying about, you know, recognizing the importance of people in the military, also want to remind people that part of the new Tax Relief Act does have a provision in there for retiring, or hiring, returning people in the military as an additional incentive, so that, that's there as well.
Okay, but this is a curricular credit matter.
Yes.
Which might not be covered by what you're stating.
No, that's...
But anyway, I'll vote for it, assuming that what Gary says is now the standard procedure, so, okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.7 Institutional Membership, here for approval. Is there a second? Really, there's no second. Is there a second, he says hopefully?
Second.
Very nice. Discussion? All right, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously, finally. Item 6, item 6.8.
Mr. President.
Trusty Fuentes.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate our colleague, trustee John Williams, for this award. I think that John makes an extraordinary effort to stay ahead of this board in offering leadership, especially in his attendance at statewide and national conferences, bringing us very worthy information. And I commend that effort. I think those reports are informative, and I think he has served with distinction, and I would move his nomination.
I will exercise my privilege to second that motion. All right. Moved and seconded, and a worthy nomination, and again, and also thanks to Trusty Williams for his, for his support. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the nomination. You should vote. You should vote yes. All right. Very good. Congratulations. Item 6.9, Academic Personnel Action Items.
So moved.
No changes.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, no changes. Discussion, seeing none, we vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.10, the Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
And again, no changes to the item, moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, we vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 7.1 is an information item concerning sustainability efforts. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none. Thank you for that informative report. Item 7.2, the Basic Aid Report. It's an information item. All right. Item 7.3, the Facilities Plan Status Report. Guys are good. Item 7.4, the List of Board Requested Reports. 7.5, our Monthly Status Report, Monthly Financial Status Report. Thank you. Item 7.6, Quarterly Investment Report. Item 7.7, the Budget Update Report. 7.8, this is a report on the Retiree Trust Fund. Trusty Williams.
Well, Vice Chancellor, Deputy Chancellor Porter, I noticed the trust fund was affected, like all of our retirement funds, by the stock market. Is there any update on that? I think it was a 52.7% in the fixed funds bonds and 47.3% in common stock, and we lost essentially nine or 10% of the portfolio. Are we still invested in the same percentages and in a whole position, or do you have any reporting on that?
It's a very conservative investment, as you can tell. There's a large investment in bond. The, is there any news? Well, you read the paper every day. The stock market's gotten worse since then.
Have we left the funds in the same, is the portfolio the same, I guess, right now?
I mean, here's the, here's the issue. We haven't lost any money unless we sell it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I want to know.
So, don't sell it. You haven't lost anything, and eventually the market will recover, because it's, the investments are all in quality mutual fund-type investments.
That's the same thing I'm doing too, personally, so. Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Trusty Jay.
Yeah, I'm real concerned. My stock advisors told me to get out of the market about six months ago, and that was 4,500 points ago. Thank God they did. I'm real concerned that we don't take the money in common stocks. I'm a trend investor, okay? And when the trend is up, you're going to make money in the stock market. When the trend is down, you're going to have to be an expert on shorting, or you're going to lose your shirt. And that's what's happening to a huge number of people right now. And I'm disappointed that we've lost so much money. I would say we ought to consider very carefully about switching the common stock investments into fixed rates of return right now. If the market turns around, you can go back and buy common stocks at any time. Common stocks are highly liquid, and it's a darn good time to be out of the market right now, unless you're an expert at shorting, and also can read when the bottom hits. My son is a stock analyst, and he says, hey, I think we're talking another 1,500 to 2,000 points down. I'd hate to see that happen to a fund that we had completely paid off in June because of losses in common stocks. So, I don't know. It seems to me we at least ought to think about that. And I wouldn't wait another month or two, you know? The market gets crushed every day practically, and if it's up 200 points one day, the next day it's down 300. So I mean, you know, the volatility is so incredible now that nobody really can read it, and I, and the experts agree to that. And so unless it's money we're willing to lose, and I'm a retiree of this district, I'm not willing to lose it either, I'd say we ought to consider very seriously getting out of common stocks, putting them to fixed returns, which are very low now, 2% is good, you know? But nevertheless, we'd be safer than, and when the market turns around and the trend is up, then we can go back to common stocks or preferred stocks or other types of equities. But equities are dangerous, guys. They really are. I hear that from my kid every night. So anyway, I don't know. What does the board think? Has anybody else got any opinions on it?
We'll see. Trusty...
The CPA over there is shaking his head yes. I'm pleased to see that.
Well, no.
Make my comments, though, because I'm going to respectfully disagree with you, Bill. Frankly, for this kind of a fund, a 16.55% being down now since June 24th of...
Yeah, that's when we established the fund, so that's why that...
Okay, so that was, so we've been in the fund now for going on a year.
No.
No.
It would, it would have been, the six-month period was the end of December. It would, it would have been, the six-month period was the end of December. So this is a report, isn't it, through the end of December? Right.
Basically, the worst six months.
Well, it's saying, since June 24th inception, our funds are down 16.55%. Am I reading that correct?
Yes.
Um, since June 24th.
Right. And during that time, S and P 500 was down 28%. I mean, you've, you've got all those.
Right, we've got all the statistics there. I was just going to say, being only down 16.55% is remarkable.
Right, correct.
Frankly. And this is the kind of fund.
Devastating.
That's, that's invested on a long-term basis.
Yeah.
Normally, frankly, you'd see a larger percentage of that probably in common stocks. I think they've been very wise not to have, to, to have a much more conservative allocation than what they've had. It seems to me we ought to be following our investment advice, not trying to time the market, because sure, we could throw it all into fixed income and, and, you know, maybe avoid some further decline, but we may also miss it when the market, you know, picks up again.
That's true.
On the other hand, so I would certainly be inclined to follow our investment advisors on this. I think that's a respectable return based on where we're at now, and I think we ought to stay the course.
Well, I was a stockbroker for six years, and I'll tell you, if I put one of my customers, one of my clients, in that type of investment, believe me, I'd be getting 2:00 AM calls saying, what in the hell are you doing with my account?
Unless they were talking to their buddy who had lost 40 or 50% of his account.
Yeah, I understand that people are losing more, but I don't think that justifies us leaving it where it is, very frankly.
Well, we could turn.
I'm going to honest distance of opinion, but it is a huge amount of money to lose. And we had it paid off in June.
Well, what you're talking about, trustee Jay, is, if you read the report, about turning an unrealized loss into a realized loss, and I'm not sure that's the way to go. Deputy chancellor Portner.
It's unrealized, and if the common stocks that we have turn around, but you know, some of them may be turkeys too.
Okay.
Chancellor, deputy chancellor.
I'd like the board to consider another aspect of this, and that's that we set this money up into a trust fund, and we hired someone to manage the fund, and we hired people to make investment recommendations to us. We set the level of risk that we're willing to take, which is a low level of risk. If the board directs the fund, you are personally liable for any losses. You aren't, as long as it's in this trust, and the trust managers are making the decision based upon the parameters that we give them. If you want to take on that kind of liability.
Bill, your share's a little more than a million.
Long discussion with your trust managers.
You can give it to me, I'll, I'll pass it on.
No, but I was going to say, you have a long discussion if you're trust managers, if you're unhappy with them, okay? And I'm unhappy with that, so.
All right, well, it is an information item here, so there is no action agendized for tonight.
I understand that, I understand that.
So, so, all right, we are through with the calendar, other than the written reports, excuse me, other than the reports, and let's start, as always, with the president of Saddleback College.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I know it's old, old news now, but it's wonderful news, since this is the first board meeting since we received the wonderful news from WASC. So I wanted to congratulate the board, the chancellor, and most importantly, frankly, Saddleback College. Our wonderful faculty, staff, administrators, they did a terrific job of, of getting that through, so congratulations to everybody. Second, continuing on grad, congratulations, I'd like to congratulate IVC on the wonderful president's cup, of course, which was a lot of fun and a great competition, and I guess we couldn't have gotten closer than what it ended up being, which was two to two and a tiebreaker, which is the final score. But for those of you who did attend that last game at IVC, the men's game, it was one of the best games of the year with, so congratulations on that lucky shot, Glenn. With that said, I would like to say that, also bearing some wonderful news, on Friday, Saddleback's men's basketball team had a huge victory. They won the final game of their regular season and are placed first in their conference and are league champions. They now, just found out today, that nobody's probably heard yet, just found out from Tommy Lippold, we are now seeded number one in the playoffs in the tournament coming up, and the first game is this Saturday. We play versus the winner of Cerritos or LA Valley College, here at Saddleback, I might add. In fact, the next two games each weekend will be here at Saddleback. That's the benefits of getting the first seed. I'm also pleased to say that the coach of the men's Saddleback team, Andy Ground, was selected as the MVP coach, most valuable coach, a coach of the year by the, by his peers. And also Franklin Sessions, one of our players, was the conference MVP. So very proud so far of the accomplishments, and hopefully they'll go further. It'd be wonderful to have a state championship here for our district again. Second, another good news over at Saddleback is, we just received news to, just yesterday, just today, actually, over the weekend, and you already approved an item on the community collaborative grant, where we had previously received $400,000 for that career technical education. We just found out that we are receiving another $350,000, thanks to the efforts of Mary Williams and the wonderful people at, at our, at our campus. So very, very excited and pleased to, to receive those funds. Third, another good news, another one of our students, I don't know if you know him, David Curry. David Curry worked in our veterans outreach office. He is a Marine veteran himself, he's a student here. He was just selected last week for the USA Today All-Conference Selection, which is a very big prestigious honor. And in addition to that, it's with Phi Beta Theta Kappa, Phi Beta Theta Kappa, did I say that right? Phi Theta Kappa. And he'll also receive a $7,500 scholarship. He transferred to UCI just this year, and he'll be going up to Sacramento to, to receive that. It is a big honor, only a few students across the country get that honor, so we're very pleased about that. Finally, this, as you know, is a big month, it's Black History Month, and I put some stuff on here to, to what's going on at the campus, but on Thursday in particular, we have a half a day of festivities of various programs commemorating and celebrating the black community. I'm very pleased that we've developed a new relationship with the Reverend Mark Whitlock from the AME Church in Irvine, who will be one of the guest speakers here. I have met with him as well, and just a dynamic person, and also interested in doing some programs for helping underserved communities and, and students here at Saddleback, in particular in the African-American community. So we're very thrilled about that. Finally, on a, a not-so-good news, this last couple weeks, we've lost two very important members to the, our campus. Friends of the Library program, that you're all aware of, two of them that have been involved for over 15 years each, passed away unfortunately. Would like to, to recognize them tonight. First is Margaret Hoffman, she's been involved for 16 years with the Friends of the Library. And Sterling Steele, who's been about 11 years involved, they served in a lot of, very active members of that, so we will, they will be missed, missed greatly, but did want to recognize them tonight in the meeting. Other than that, I'll hand it over to my colleague.
President Rockman. Thank you very much. I too would like to recognize the new accreditation status that we enjoy. I think it is well-deserved from both campuses. IVC hosted the 11th International Debate Competition just recently, included four different campuses. It had students from Beijing Foreign University, Zhen International Studies University, and Saddleback College, as well as Irvine Valley College. And as it turns out, Irvine Valley College won that debate. Sorry, Todd.
Looking like it's a hooves?
Actually, I'm really not, sorry. Actually, if you get the opportunity, this is the fifth time we've had the Chinese students on the campus debating. We have hosted the British as well. These are really fantastic debates. They have a certain flavor to them that has a combination of some lack of seriousness combined with some very serious debates. Very good to see. Also, the astounding inventions was mentioned. I'd like to thank our board president, Don Wagner, for being there and judging, as well as our academic senate president, Wendy Gabriella, was there also judging. Chancellor attended, thank you all very much for being there. We were able to give away $8,000 in cash prizes to, to these inventors, and we've also coaxed one of our major sponsors, Greenberg Trowig, to give two $10,000 pro bono patent searches for, for two of the inventors. So it was highly successful and a great outreach program. If you'd like to judge sometime, please let me know, it's a great, great event to do. I'll leave it at that tonight.
Thank you. We have ATEP, director Peoples.
Good evening, thank you. Well, just a note, ATEP continues to stay at the 1,000-plus enrollment mark, which we're pleased, and our two hosting colleges are very pleased about that. ATEP planning, of course, is, is moving very well forward on the concept plan, which we heard lots of about tonight, and certainly everyone is pleased with the progress we're making toward on, on that. ATEP continues to make significant progress on many fronts and opportunities, one of which I'd mentioned earlier, but I'll say again now, again now too, is grant opportunities, and not just at the colleges, but at some of the programs right at ATEP. Our photonics and optics program was invited to a, a meeting, a one-day meeting in Waco, Texas, that I attended this week. And we're going to be one of four colleges nationally to be put, be putting together a national grant with National Science Foundation, and a second grant, we think, with the Department of Defense, to really kind of relaunch, re, realign and improve our optics, photonics, and laser programs. So that's one of the neat opportunities we're working on, actually with the OPTC, which is the National Center for Optics and Photonics. So that's pretty exciting. This is, at the end of the week, I'll, I'll be 90 days on the job, and I can tell you that I truly feel like I've been immersed in the development process, and I've been very involved in putting the plan together with a lot of help from my president colleagues and many of the consultants and others. And it's really a thrilling ride to see how this district can move aggressively to address the potential for future student success in training. So I'm very pleased to be involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Professor Gabriella, you were late to the meeting, don't ever do that again. I had to fight Cosgrove and Haggerty off for your time.
Well, I thank you for allowing me to speak, and actually, tonight I have no report.
All right. Sorry about that, guys. Could have given you the time and you blew it. Professor Cosgrove.
Save it for next session. Just a personal note, in class today, when I got detracted by one of my student comments, I forgot what I had been talking about before that, and I said, what was the last thing I said? And somebody in the back of the row said, class dismissed, sir. And I haven't caught him yet, but I will. Just a couple of items, I want to thank and recognize Claire Cesaria Silva for filling in on the institutional effectiveness chair. And we have a new person, Jane Horling, who will be replacing Tom Wise Rock, who worked for so many years, on our in-service and flex program. Jane is in the math department, she is a quick learner, been working with our secretary, Brittany Holmes, and we're very pleased that she has joined us. We still need a curriculum chair, so anybody in the room that has some technical skill, we'd be glad to interview.
Professor Haggerty, on behalf of the union.
Thank you, President Wagner, I have no report tonight.
Very good, all right. Well, let's go down here, Ms. Dixon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for adjourned this meeting in Holly Savio's memory. She was once a classified employee at Irvine Valley College, that's when I first met her. And thank you also for the C's candidate, this is actually a fundraiser by IVC's Classified Senate, raising money for scholarships for our students. So, so thank you. Let's see, I attended the president's cup, the basketball game, it was fantastic, I'm loving the, the, the fun competition, you know, the positive competition, it's really, really, really nice. Also worked the astounding inventions, which was great, it's great to see our young people excited about positive things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of Holly Savio. Oh, oh, my apologies, you're sitting there so quietly, you're right.
Um, okay, well, I'm here on behalf of ASIVC. First of all, I attended the homecoming game at IVC too, and I was part of it on court. That was really eventful, I hope everyone had fun who went. Just some things that are going on, on student government. This Thursday, we have, or in honors, uh, in honor of Black History Month, we have a speaker who's going to be on campus. It's going to be from like 11:30 to 1:00. He's a Malcolm X performer, so, yeah. We have teacher of the year applications, which are due on February 27th, so that's going to be coming up soon to see who that professor is. And then we have senior day on March 10th, which, high school senior day on March 10th, hopefully, that's a big turnout like last year. And we just sent out the ASIVC budget request for, to the professors and co-curricular programs. So we're going to start working on the budget for next year, which will be up for information item in June. And then, last but not least, we have commencement speaker. We are wrapping up the keynote speaker, and then the student commencement speaker forms have just gone out, so, yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you. I got everybody in the front row? All right, thank you, apologies. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of Holly Savio. All right, we are adjourned, thank you all.